Housing Authority of the City of Salem to order, please call the roll.
Commissioner Kayser.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson is absent. Guest Counselor Mark Wigg.
Here.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner, or Chair McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Osid.
Here.
Commissioner Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's no additions and deletions to the agenda. There's no public comment. Vice Chair Lewis, do you have a motion for me on the consent calendar, please?
Yes, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. Moved by Vice Chair Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Cook, to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion?
Actually, this is an easy one. The consent calendar includes the minutes from the September 25 meeting, and that's it.
That's it. Okay, any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're down to information reports, and Andy, you've got anything you want to discuss in that?
Thank you, sir. Not so much in the report itself. I do have a couple announcements that I'd like to offer you. Homeless Rental Assistant Program, giving you some numbers. We have forty clients working with us right now. We have fourteen clients in housing. Last month, I was talking about how the clients come and go, to some degree, fourteen units. And we're still having trouble with enticing landlords to be a part of this, and so, I guess I'm asking, anybody that you know and that are landlords, please feel free to talk to them a lot. We're doing our best for this program, and the program is coming along really well. But in order to maybe get more landlords ready to go, in the public housing plan that the commission approved this past two months ago, I guess, you authorize the ability to put project vouchers in other properties. And so, we will be, the first of November, we'll be putting a solicitation out to third-party landlords who will have an opportunity to get a voucher for a client in one of their properties. So, we're trying to get as big of a tent as possible, and we hope that that gets some momentum from the landlords who may be sitting on the fence. We'd like them to be off the fence and be with us. So, that's what I wanted to say.
Any questions, comments? Yes, sir. Can't see it.
Yes, I was, I read this report.
Yeah, you don't push it unless you want it to be quiet.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
They're always live.
And I just found out the numbers weren't, didn't have a context. I'm new here.
Sure.
And so, they're just numbers, but it doesn't tell me, do you have a target? How close to meeting that target? Is there a demand? How close to meeting that demand? Those kind of things. And maybe other counselors would find that helpful, too.
You're referring to the program management report?
Yeah.
Okay. Generally, we're going to have a community connection, and that's what we have on the first page. And the activities that we've gone through with Parkway Village, which is one of our properties, and the activities that we make happen on that site along with the clients. So, that's what that is. On the second page, that's where we talk about our Section 8 vouchers. How many of those we have? Two-seven-seven-five. We're serving 2,775 householders, households now. Below is the VASH vouchers that are allowed to veterans through the VA. And then, we have a youth program in concert with Human Services, Department of Human Services, where we're helping youth who are getting close to being 18 years old, and we're allowing them to stay with a voucher so they could have better opportunities for education and finding their way in the world, if you will.
But what I'm wondering is, you explained some of those programs there well enough, but it's like, for regular vouchers, what's the demand for those? Are we fully meeting that demand? You know, like, oh, the demand is up here, and we have 3,000.
The waitlist has always been at least 3,000. It is now.
And, oh, the waitlist is 3,000. Yeah, okay. And...
More people than what we have.
More people than we can house, for sure.
Right. And, yeah, that, to me, would help put it in context. We have a demand this big, we're meeting that much.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seen none? Call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem as adjourned.
Well done, well done, Mr. Chair.
Call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Board Member Kayser.
Present.
Board Member Anderson is absent. Guest Counselor Wigg.
Present.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member McCoy.
Here.
Board Member Osid.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Alrighty. No additions or deletions? Counselor, nope. Okay. No one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to address the city's urban renewal agency? Okay, thank you. And the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Go ahead.
Consent calendar tonight consists of the minutes of the September 25 Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and a resolution that authorizes the executive director to execute real estate purchase option agreements with the Union Gospel Mission of Salem, and John Saffron, Oregon and John Saffron, Argo Investment Corporation, and the Gasner Saffron Trust.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I don't see any other business. The urban renewal agency is adjourned.
Less than ten minutes for two meetings, can we stay on that?
Something tells me.
Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for October 23 to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kayser.
Present.
Counselor Anderson is absent. Guest Counselor Mark Wigg.
Present.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osid.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Counselor McCoy, the additions and deletions.
We have only written testimony, so we have no additions and deletions.
Okay. Very good. And now, council manager comments. I do want to welcome Mark Wigg, serving as guest counselor for Counselor Anderson. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to comment?
Oh, I can't.
Welcome back, Counselor Kayser.
Thank you.
Glad to have you back in town. Okay, we'll move on, then. No proclamations, no presentations, public comment. Okay, I'm going to call up folks for public comment. These are on issues that are on the agenda tonight, and I'd ask you to keep your remarks to three minutes. At two minutes, the light turns yellow. At three minutes, it turns red, and then I have to interrupt you. So, let's keep from having that happen. That's never any fun for any of us. Cassia Quillanen.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Cassia Quillanen. I live in the Englewood District of our lovely city, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Salem Parks and Recreation Board to speak with regard to the new proposed stage to be constructed by the Downtown Rotary Association in the near future. The Salem Parks and Recreation Board had an opportunity, had two opportunities, actually, to weigh in on the proposed proposal, first the proposal, and secondly, on reviewing the proposed design. And they unanimously came to the conclusion that the design that is presented to you this evening, or has been presented to you, what's called, we're calling "the basket we've designed," was our preferred alternative. This is a lovely design, in my humble opinion, for whatever it's worth. It's sophisticated, it's innovative, and it pays tribute to the Native American heritage and tribes that lived on the site at the time. And my only concern is that I hope that whatever we build actually looks like the conceptual design that we have before us.
Get it better.
Sometimes things, when they get built, do not look like the pictures that are presented to us. But we are pleased with the design as it is currently rendered.
Great.
And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Cassia? Thank you very much. Rich Duncan.
My name is Rich Duncan. My office is at 2295 Rural Avenue. I'm here speaking in support of Sedcor tonight, and certainly open to questions. I've been a member since, before 2004, I was trying to look up, probably maybe 2001. Sedcor, there are many examples of how Sedcor and the City of Salem has partnered, bringing business to Salem, including Garmin, Amazon, Cabin Notch, while assisting other businesses to grow, including Norpac, Hennessy, Cold Storage, and Kettle Foods. Bringing companies to the area and helping them expand increases the economic base. For example, Garmin's last hiring included 70 engineers. Wages paid to Garmin employees filter through the area and support other businesses like mine, restaurants, gas stations, and grocery stores, and benefit the local economy. As a board member and past chairman, I've had the privilege of seeing Sedcor work with these companies of all sizes, in trade sector industry. And while Sedcor does each of these projects, many have, we all have the goal, remains consistent, to bring high-value jobs to the area. And certainly, bringing high-value jobs and having a bigger tax base helps with parks and amphitheaters and all the things we like to build. Beyond helping the trade sector business grow, Sedcor, along with its private and public partners, plays a vital role in training the next generation of workers. Sedcor is an advocate of programs in both high school and community college. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Are there any questions? Alrighty, thank you very much.
Good, thanks.
Chad Freeman.
I guess it's evening, isn't it? It's been a long day. For the record, my name is Chad Freeman. I'm the president of Sedcor. As Rich pointed out, we're a local economic development organization, working Marion Polk in Yamhill County, but wanted to talk a little bit today about the work we've done in Salem over the last year. I think in your packet, you should have a report, really detailing some of the work that we've done, some of the results. But just to highlight a couple key points, and first of all, I want to start off with a note of appreciation. I think this year, the vision of this group, as well as the hard work of the staff, has really been apparent when you look at everything that's been accomplished and that we're looking forward to in the next year. So, I know that takes work. I know that requires a lot of strength of character to stick to a plan, and we're really seeing that come forward, as well as the work with staff. To that extent, we've actually been at multiple events in the last month, where we've had local developers or folks who've made million-dollar investments say that Salem is the place to make investments because of the certainty and the speed of which we can do, can get it accomplished, and that Salem really is the new standard. And we have heard this over and over, and so, wanted to pass on that compliment and that thank you to this group. In the report, I think you'll have a couple key points. One of, the first of which, it has been a great year. And in fact, this year ended July 1, so since that time, we've had some announcements that will make next year a pretty significant year in terms of job growth and investment as well. Two, that Sedcor works in partnership to really help build out business. We work with cities and counties, and the list of our partners, and not the least of which are private partners as well, but the list of partners is very long, and we couldn't do it without working together as a team. And kind of a sub-part of that, really, is that the companies we work with are all sizes, I know, with a lot of the projects. It seems like that which gets press are those really large announcements, but we've worked this year with companies with as few as two employees, and now, obviously, like I said, the Amazon announcement, several hundred thousand. But we work equally with all of them, really to help focus, because we understand it's across all parts of the spectrum that we get our benefit out some quick. And I guess then the last part, really, is that retention-expansion, that work that we do, working with local companies who are already here, that is the lifeblood of our work and something that we really focus on. And I think when you look at the companies that we've worked with over the last 35 years, pretty amazing that we've had this partnership for 35 years, that most of the success has come from that. So, as you're looking at the report, I think the other piece I'd leave you with is that the future is bright as well. Right now, there's been a lot of investment in Mill Creek, and that is, I think we're really seeing that bear fruit with $140 million of investment in the last 15 months, representing well over 1,000 jobs. And I think we look forward to working on the next chapter with this group as well, about where do we set the next level, so build, continue to build for decades to come, as well as we help the startup community and the entrepreneurs in our network continue to grow as well. So, with that, look forward to any questions on the report or future conversation.
That was just perfect, right there. Everyone take note how he did that. He just...
Actually, shouldn't I cut out two pieces?
And completed his sentence. That is remarkable, Mr. Freeman. Any questions?
Great work.
I want to compliment, that's just, I read the report over the weekend. It's just an excellent report, and it's pretty exciting, having even just sort of lived through it, how much is going on and how much we have to look forward to. We continue to have such a successful relationship with Sedcor. It's really been to the benefit of this community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Van Osdal.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ken Van Osdal. I'm a member of the Rotary Club of Salem, and I serve as co-chair on the Amphitheater Project, along with Barry Nelson here. Since the decision before the council this evening pertains specifically to the project design, I want to provide just a brief summary of the project requirements and the process that led to that design selection. The request for a design proposal identified several requirements, all balancing aesthetics and functionality, and those would figure heavily in the selection of the preferred design. First was an overall aesthetic appeal of the design. We asked for a design that is unique and iconic. We wanted one that was versatile, multipurpose, fully supportive of existing uses in the park, and visionary of potential future uses. We asked that the design be visually compatible with the new Peter Courtney Meadow Island Bridge, the Salem Riverfront Carousel, and the Rotary Pavilion at the north end of the park. Next, we asked that the conceptual design convey openness, access, and inclusion for the entire community, no closed doors. We wanted this to be a welcoming place for everyone. We also asked that the design incorporate materials and features that effectively balance function and aesthetic appeal, with low maintenance and durability. We asked the architects to design with an eye toward versatility, to accommodate a wide spectrum of performances and other activities, ranging from concerts and theater to family get-togethers, and sometimes just a fun place, covered place for kids to play. We specified a number of technical requirements, dimensions, wind load, weight-bearing requirements, along with compliance to building codes in the Americans with Disabilities Act. Finally, we said that the roof cover, any backdrop or side shades, supports towers or other permanent structural features should not necessarily obscure or block the views of the Peter Courtney Meadow Island Bridge. Moreover, as we discussed the project with the architects, we made it clear that we were looking for a design that fits with and complements the natural beauty of the riverfront park environment. We carried these requirements through the process of selecting a proposed design through several months of public comment. The design evaluation tool we used was a matrix of several considerations, and it focused on the design concept, was open and inviting, would it stand the test of time, perhaps for several generations, and would it fit in the riverfront park. Number two was feasibility, durability, public safety, construction methods of maintenance, and functionality. Flexibility for multiple uses, opportunity for uses in the future, was it people-friendly, welcoming, and so on. We intentionally set a very high bar for the design, knowing that it would serve a lot of people in a lot of different ways over a long period of time. And so, in doing that, it instills a genuine sense of community and statewide pride. The design that you have before you this evening meets that high bar. Thank you.
Great. Perfect. Geez. Very, very good. Oh, don't leave. Maybe someone will have some...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wigg.
Yes, sir. I think I saw in the report that it was 2019 you're looking at starting construction? Is that a hopeful, or is that a hard number?
That's, it's as hard a number as we can get.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Cook.
So, just to review, the requirement was not blocking the view of the bridge.
Correct.
Not of the waterway or any of the other natural park elements, and then also complements the beauty of the bridge, not of other natural features of the park.
Complements the beauty of the entire park.
Of the entire park.
Of the setting, yes.
Okay. Just making sure to be clear on that.
Yes. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Lewis.
I'm going to be real quick, because this is a personal question. One of the things that really attracts me to this space is the music concerts that we have. Will this cover enhance that musical experience, or do you know what effect it might have?
Do you mean in terms of acoustics?
Acoustics, yes.
The structure itself will probably be sound-neutral, so that any sound that is going to be projected in a large way would probably be amplified. But for a small use in the park, it would have good acoustics, but it probably will not be designed to project sound because of the structure itself.
So...
Will it enhance the experience? Hopefully, it'll be a beautiful place for concerts, yes.
Counselor Cook.
So, it has not been tested acoustically, or acoustics were not factored in with the design?
What you have is a design concept, and acoustics and the engineering behind that is to come, that's what we're getting into that process right now, waiting for a design concept approval from this council.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. I was surprised to read in the newspaper that it's already been named, and I was curious what the process was that you went through with that, and whether the city was engaged in that process at all.
Mary, you want to join me for talking about this? So, yes, it's, yes, let me describe. The process for naming it was, I would say, was a developing and an organic process. The Rotary Club of Salem has, Jerry Frank is the badge-holding number one in our club. We'd already raised just about a half a million dollars for the project, and as we thought about who this should be named after, we thought about the story, the whole story of this amphitheater. And Jerry Frank is a person who really embodies Rotary's values of service above self. He's given a huge amount to this community, to this state, and actually, to the country in past service. And it seemed really fitting, and so, we checked that out with a number of different people. We talked with a number of different people, leaders in the community, and yes, we did talk with Mayor Bennett about that, and determined that that seemed like a really good idea. We talked with our board and with our membership and made that decision.
Thank you.
Mary, anything to add to that?
I think you did pretty well.
Missing a piece of that?
Did alright.
Well, I was meant to, because I had you here. Thank you. But, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chain Griggs.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and counselors, and Counselor. My name is Chain Griggs. I live in Salem at 260 Washington Street. I also am a member of the Downtown Rotary Club, and I'm here to talk tonight, to share briefly with you about the extensive public outreach that our Rotary Club engaged in to share the proposed design concepts and to gather ideas for the riverfront park, the amphitheater. The list is a long one. I'm not going to go through all of it, but it should really be considered the gold standard for public outreach. Here are just a few of the impressive facts. It shouldn't surprise you, since this is a Rotary project, that we talked to all of the Rotary Clubs in Salem and Kaiser. We have spoken with 17 out of the 18 neighborhood associations. Our 18th one is scheduled for November 7. We've met with several neighbors to the park, the First Baptist Church, the Gilbert House, the Carousel, the Salem Convention Center. And over 1,000 people have viewed the architects' renderings at a lot of events down at riverfront park, and at the Salem Art Association, the art fair. So, Bite and Brew, the Movies at the Park, the three River Rock concerts, we all, we had a presence at all those events. In addition to those face-to-face meetings, we took advantage of media opportunities through our website and through our Facebook page. Some other traditional web touches, we had four articles with the Statesman Journal, one with the Chamber of Commerce, one with Salem Weekly. And then, the Statesman Journal, I think this is important to know, the Statesman Journal, the Chamber, and Salem Weekly really helped urge the public participation for the public forum that we held in August at the Anderson Room at the library, very well attended. And that gave people not only the opportunity to hear the architects' ideas behind their renderings, but to ask questions, and then, to one-on-one give feedback. We broke them out into groups, and they could actually give direct feedback to the architects. So, in addition to these and other meetings that I didn't mention, there were about 33 other meetings with concert and theater professionals, consultants, and community leaders. So, over the past six months, we have listened, we have heard, we have incorporated ideas for improvements for these renderings, and overwhelmingly, without a doubt, the input has been so positive. You know, people in Salem are super excited about having a good, high-performance stage in their riverfront park. And with that, I'll answer questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Griggs. Counselor Hoy.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. And it was about your process, and I just wanted to compliment you on the process, the outreach that you did. I personally saw it at least five times, and I think I could probably give the presentation. So, and that's a compliment.
Thank you.
I saw it, and a lot of my neighbors did. I saw it at every one of my neighborhood associations, and I think anybody that's coming before the city council with this kind of project, they could take lessons from the way you conducted this. I think it was, I think you did an excellent job.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Cook.
I just had a question. You've mentioned outreach with existing partners, you're saying, town, because this would be a theater venue, was there outreach done to existing theaters like the Grand and Elton Mayor?
Yes, we've had, Tom Phone is actually with Elton, is one of our technical consultants, along with Rachel, who'll be speaking to you in a moment. So, we've had conversations with Allied Video, Cascade Sound, and now, we're starting to ramp up those conversations with the architect to kind of get the real specifics and the down-on-the-weeds information that we need to move forward.
Great, thank you very much. Hazel Patton.
Hazel Patton, 1363 Court. And I am one of the lucky ones that got to be on the committee that chose the design. We had about four, five, five designs, and it went down to four to choose, and... And this was a process with seven of us looking at these and getting the feedback from the community, from all the meetings that Chain talked about. And it was an interesting and an exciting project, and I'm glad I got to be a part of it. What happened was that, as we went through this, one design just kind of rose up, and it was exciting to see. We loved things about all the designs, and we have to compliment the architects who did submit their designs, but this one just came right up to the top. And it's been spoken before, but it has a way of being a part of the park. It looks like it belongs. It has the curvature that matches so many of the things that are in our park right now. But the thing that really got my attention was the story of the basket weave and of the relationship with the Kualua and Native Americans. This was their home. This was their spot. And this is one way that we have, as a community, of honoring and of pointing out that these people lived here and that they were an important part of our history. The river that goes by, Sowolamette, was probably the I-5 of the Native Americans, and this would have been a spot that they stopped at. So, looking at this beautiful design and then recognizing that there will probably be two power poles just a little bit south of that, the Grand Ron Tribe has indicated that this is a project that they want to be a part of. So, here we have this wonderful package of a story of honoring those that came before us. I beat it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Kaser.
Thank you. Thank you, Hazel. You brought up that you talked with the Grand Ron Tribe. Could you just explain a little bit more? Were they part of the design committee, or how did that kind of transform?
I did not talk to them. I hope I didn't make that sound like I did. I was given that information. I believe the architect that designed this did.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor, I do want to call your attention to written testimony from the Confederated Tribes in your packet. Yes, Counselor Cook.
Hazel, you mentioned the two poles that are coming. Could you speak a little more to that?
The reason I know about that is my involvement with the Peter Courtney Bridge, Meadow Bridge. And as we were meeting, we had David Lewis from the Confederated Tribes came to us with this proposal, that they put, there's like two totem poles, and it's to symbolize what the Kaluaa Indians would, or other tribes perhaps, would have had on their land. And if you were coming down the river and you were going to visit them, you would go through those poles. That's the way you would be greeted onto their property, or not, perhaps. But they are in the process, we had hoped that they would be done when the bridge was done, but that didn't happen.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Jim Vu. Counselor Cook, I'm going to alert you that your mic is not working, so we might have you share with, it's not you, it's your mic.
It's not yours.
Yeah. We'll figure it out, but share with Counselor Hoy, just so we can hear you on TV.
Three minutes begin. My name is Jim Vu. I live at 2179 Woodhaven Court Northwest, and I am speaking here having testimony on item 3.2 regarding the funding of Salem Main Street Association. So, come to you, what's being handed out, a couple handouts. Wanted to give you a little background with Salem Main Street and ask for your support on working with the funding from the parking tax to be able to work with the funding for projects. We work with Salem Main Street. Just as a little background, we're here in this handout, we're following the handbook that Salem Main Street has provided, a nationally recognized program. Our specific organization, Main Street Program, is nationally recognized, just this last year. There are a couple councilors that are familiar with this program, and wanted just to kind of give you an idea. In terms of our table of contents, looking at the handbook, I specifically printed out page 42 about the Board of Directors categories, and we have is a number of categories that break them down for downtown retailers, professionals, property owners, service sectors. And want to be able to share with you the makeup of our board. The little handout that we have presented to the board in the past shows who the current members of the board are. And being able to look at that, we're looking at six downtown retailers, five professionals, four downtown property owners, nine from the service sector, one for the financial institutions, the Chamber of Commerce Board, heads of neighborhood organizations, and community leaders. We also have a strong partnership. One of our board members is Carol Long, who is Vice President for Willamette University. So, being able to bring that gap in together with all those individuals. We've gone a long way to be able to include members of the community. If you guys look on the big gigantic, as I've learned a new word, ginormous, prints out here, this was published on April 16th in the Statesman Journal, a half-page ad on the Sunday paper, to be able to advertise the launching of our organization. We're working very hard to follow the Main Street model. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We're going to take what good looks like and run with it for our community. So, just ask that, working with the Downtown Parking Tax, be able to use those funds for the Salem Main Street, ask for your support on that. So, thank you, Mayor and councilors.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions? All righty. Thank you. Steve Anderson. This is, and Steve, before you speak, I'm going to have the city attorney comment on testimony you and two others will be giving.
So, there's some folks who are going to testify on information item 6A, which is a complaint amendment, and 7.1, which is first reading of an ordinance. That's a planning commission decision. It's the next party land use, or it's a quasi judicial land use decision. And we're going to go ahead and get their testimony, and if it gets called up by council, we can include it into the record. But just so you know, it's a next party matter, so please don't engage in questions.
Good. No questions. That's great.
No questions.
Steve Anderson, 3240 Northwest, 3240 Geller Road Northwest. I'm here in an unofficial and official capacity tonight. Unofficial because the Neighborhood Association has just gone through some, several meetings of updating bylaws, electing new officers, and officially as the past co-chair, because this was on the agenda, approved by the body. And we're here to say, we're in favor of item 718. The Neighborhood Association voted to support this development, and before the Planning Commission agreed with them to support it. But there's one item that staff agreed to previously that we want to see that gets into the record, and just that is very simply, is that this property has a surveyed, is on part of the surveyed right-of-way from Marine Drive, and we would like to have that indicated on the zoning map. When we had the discussion before this body at the city budget meeting, staff assured us that in the future, that as far as Marine Drive was concerned, when properties came up that were in the surveyed right-of-way, they would indicate it on the zoning map. In our conversations with the Planning Commission, because we had a long conversation with the Public Works people, which provided good information and good testimony on traffic and volume, that got lost. So, staff agreed to do this before the council at the budget discussions, and we would like to ask that this right-of-way be indicated on the zoning map. It will prevent building permits being built in the survey right-of-way, and it will help disclose to the public that there is something on their property. We want to prevent what happened out at the River Valley subdivision, where as part of the Third Bridge right-of-way, properties were built in the right-of-way and encroach on the urban growth boundary. So, very simply, I'll repeat it, the Neighborhood Association has voted to support this development. We had a good conversation with the developer. We're in strong support of it. But we're asking city council, as you deliberate on this, that you ask or indicate that Marine Drive right-of-way will be indicated on the zoning map, so that that can go forward as a local access and circulation study and not be messed up as could happen if it's not there, and so people know that that right-of-way is part of their property. So, that's where it's at. So, thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Kathy Dewana.
I'm a Realtor with Berkshire Hathaway, and I also represent the interests of the Creamers and the Spin Gaths with respect to any matters that affect Marine Drive that we speak about. I wanted to underscore the importance or the challenges that we face even as Realtors when we have surveyed right-of-ways out there and buildings get built there. As a matter of course, the surveyed right-of-way is surveyed and recorded with the surveyor's office. It's not surveyed and recorded with the clerk's office, so it's not a matter of public record, per se. So, what happens in our real estate business is that if you have a surveyed right-of-way, we have a seller's property disclosure statements that requires the owner of a property to disclose whether or not there are known, any known government actions or surveys that affect their interest in the property. Well, builders are exempt from that. So, first time a development gets built, the public doesn't know. The buyers of these homes are clueless, and they could be buying a brand-new home, and before you know it, your home is gone, or you even improve your home to a street that had been planned 10 years before, 20 years before. In this case, Marine Drive, the development happened at the same time as the funding for Marine Drive for local access. So, I would encourage you to incorporate in your process reserving public right-of-way when you have land use decisions before you. Just, I don't know if this is appropriate or not to this case, but the developer here wrote to us and said, "It would be substantially easier for me, as I attempt to develop the property, if Marine Drive was already in and being used, as opposed to developing two major entrances and excesses. Not to mention that the right turn only out of my driveway has been a major source of contention for us from day one." So, our developer here has, excuse me, only temporary access, and it's worth the investment to allow him to have permanent access. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Shaw.
Mayor Bennett and councilors, my name is Herb Shaw, and I reside at 1930 Wallace Road Northwest and a business owner at 908 Edgewater Street Northwest. Concerning the land use proposal for the Nathan Corey property at 1332 and 1334 Wallace Road Northwest, I support Mr. Corey's desire to develop his property, but he points out a fallacy with the city's planning strategy. Mr. Corey is limited in what he can develop, because the city has not adequately addressed the infrastructure necessary to support development in West Salem. I'm referring to Marine Drive, as well as the river crossings that will actually remove regional traffic from our city. ODOT will allow Mr. Corey and others to temporarily access Wallace Road with a right-in, right-out on movements only. This becomes problematic, because a U-turn movement during peak traffic conditions becomes difficult when negotiations two lanes of frustrated southbound traffic that already have been in line for over a mile. I was given a copy of a study presented to the public circa 1971, which, by the way, appears to be the last time an origin/destination study was conducted. When comparing 1971 data with the current data, it appears that Wallace Road has exceeded capacity already, not in the year 2035, as suggested at a recent meeting with the West Salem Redevelopment Advisory Board. Traffic on Wallace Road has increased over 1,000% since 1971. Traffic on Highway 22 at the west city limits, almost 700%, and traffic of combined river crossings has increased over 500% since 1971. A major change in traffic trends over the past five to 10 years has dramatically impacted conditions on Wallace Road and Highway 22 that were unforeseeable. The growth of planning business like Monrovia and the wine industry in Polk and Yamhill Counties have added significant to the ADTs, and so has the trend of Portland residents moving to West Salem and commuting to Portland. Since I moved to West Salem in 1999, the end of the line during peak times was moved, has moved from a half-mile to the south of my property and driveway to over a half-mile to the north of my driveway. This is not sustainable, and with all development in the works, it will continue to get worse. Just like Mr. Corey and other developers have stated, we need to develop the potential of Marine Drive. We can't possibly believe spending $3.66 million on a three-block section of Marine Drive will resolve anything. It will not. It cannot relieve any congestion on Wallace Road for a very long period of time, if ever. The only immediate resolution is to improve circulation around Wallace Road by purchasing a right-of-way for the Marine Drive state alignment, followed by construction within the UJB. Then we need to get serious about tackling bridge crossings with all that will actually address the real culprit, which is regional traffic. Delays will only allow more encroachment on the state environment, alignment. I don't know how to present it more clearly, so I beseech you now.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Pass this motion.
Thank you very much. Rachel Kinsman. I apologize, I can't read the rest of it. I apologize.
Hi, my name is Rachel Kinsman-Stek. I have a home in Ward 1. I'm an Associate Professor of Lighting Design and Production at Willamette University and also founding member of Theater 33. I'm here this evening to fully support the design concept for the Rotary's amphitheater. Rotary sought information from many of the theater companies, if not all the theater companies, in Salem, and they sought it from community members, to working professionals, to the local vendors, and before they developed the, you know, voted on the final design project, worked with several of us on some of the ins and outs and some of the questions that you asked, which are currently preliminary. In addition to that, Rotary really stepped forward and invited some working professionals to join the committee to ensure that this project will be successful, not only in its looks, but in its function. And that really is the key to a successful amphitheater. And, you know, I said to Barry when he talked to me a few weeks ago, a month or so ago, was, you know, a personal dream of mine would be to snag from the Bend Amphitheater Prairie Home Companion, you know? But then also to allow the Salem Ballet Company to, you know, which is a bunch of little kids to perform, to allow the new companies that are in the area, to allow older companies that are in the area. So, this project's really established and set up for music, dance, theater, and a vast number of other, anything in between, right? And that's the goal. And as, as was discussed earlier, this goal is not just for the next 20 years, but for the next 50, 60, 70 years. So, to create a space that really thinks about where the performing arts are going, where they are today, about where they could be as Salem grows and changes, and as the performing arts grow and change. Questions?
I really appreciate you coming in. Your expertise is valued on that issue like this, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for this discussion.
Kara Kue.
Hi, I'm Kara Kue. I'm the Public Relations Manager at Travel Salem. Our address is 181 High Street Northeast. And I'm here tonight representing Travel Salem and to communicate our support for the Rotary Amphitheater Project and the current design. We feel this project has tremendous value as a visitor attraction, generating new entertainment opportunities that will attract residents and visitors alike, and bring positive economic impact to our region. We believe it will increase the profile of Salem with a beautiful venue on the Willamette River, while heightening the awareness of Salem's downtown as a thriving entertainment destination. We feel this is a well-thought-out project, and we support it fully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Bruce Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Bruce Anderson, appearing before you in my capacity as President of Downtown Salem Rotary for this next year. Thankfully, I have the night off from my council up in Kaiser, where I serve, so I get to come and see how y'all do things down here in Salem. So, appreciate being here with you tonight. Here, obviously, in support of the item 3.3A on the Rotary Amphitheater item, just want to mention a couple of things for you. First of all, our Rotary Club of Salem has been here for nearly 100 years, and our working title on this project has been our Centennial Stage Project, and we're really looking forward to that, really excited, as you've already heard, done lots of work around this. Rotary Club of Salem has done a lot of things in this community over the decades that we've been here, doing a lot of good works in this community, supporting lots of nonprofits. been here, doing a lot of good works in this community, supporting lots of nonprofits here as well, really affecting and touching lives of so many of the residents of this, in and around this area, of this wonderful place that we call home. We've also been very supportive and involved down at Riverfront Park, providing some key public amenities for our park, notably the Rotary Pavilion at the north end of the park, the kids' playground at the south end of the Riverfront Park, and now this project for the, that'll be a gift to the entire community. I really appreciate the due diligence that, I think you all have heard, that we've gone through undertaking, vetting this with practically every neighborhood association up to this point, public meetings and many other presentations and meetings that have taken place. Our club supports the design and we would appreciate your support for it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Any questions? Yes, Mark.
I would just like to thank you for letting us know what else you've completed down there. I mean, I didn't know you had the pavilion and the playground and, yeah, very nice.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I can't remember how many, quite how many years ago it was that we did pull together a bunch of folks to put that pavilion structure in place. We worked with all of the Salem and Kaiser area Rotary Clubs, I believe, on the playground structure at the south end of the park. It's kind of a team effort. We like to call ourselves a club that gets things done, and so that's what we try to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Janet Lorenzen.
Hi, I'm Professor Janet Lorenzen from Willamette University. I'm here with a brief message about the Climate Action Goal and the Strategic Plan. I'm in Sally Cook's district. So I'm an affiliated faculty member with the Willamette University Institute of Sustainability. I actually study how people respond to climate change, which is to say, not very well. The Director of the Institute, Joe Abraham, couldn't make it tonight, so this is kind of a message from him. The Sustainability Institute is excited to support the city in its efforts to inventory greenhouse gases and address climate action goals framed with an equity lens, so Joe Abraham will follow up on a potential town-and-gown collaboration. So that's it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank Professor Abraham for his offer. Barry Nelson.
Well, back to the amphitheater. I'm Barry Nelson, resident of 2785 Prominent Court South and resident of Ward Six.
No, I'm just messing.
I'm the co-chair along with Ken Van Oostal of the Amphitheater Project. And you heard from Chain Griggs, who shared with you a bit about the outreach that we engaged in, but I think she left out a few, including Capitol Manor, Travel Salem, SEDCOR, and the Chamber of Commerce, where we presented a greeters program of about 100 people. And I'd like to emphasize that we enjoyed not just talking at people, but engaging with people and asking them for feedback. We took the proposed designs out to the community over and over and over, and when someone would tell us they liked or didn't like one, we didn't just make a note, but ask them why, so that we could gain insight as to how our community was thinking about the designs. In June, articles ran in the Salem Weekly News, the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce Newsletter, encouraging attendance at our July 25th public forum. And in early July, there were three, three different articles in the Statesman Journal about the project, each of which made mention of the public forum. The architects took the feedback from the community gatherings and the public forum and submitted revised concepts in September, and I can say with every degree of confidence that I am proud, thank you, Councilor Hoy, of the public process that resulted in the final concepts provided by the architects. The Design Committee, which included five Rotarians, a community representative in Hazel Patton, and a representative from the Parks Board in Cassia Quillanen, deliberated over the pros and cons of each design, selecting CB2's basket weave design. And with respect to those who might suggest the design has little connection to native culture, last week, we had the honor of visiting with the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron's Tribal Council. You have a letter from the Tribal Council Chair outlining their enthusiastic support of the design concept on which you'll be voting this evening, so I won't read the entire letter, but highlight their statements that "The amphitheater will be a great place for people to gather and the basket concept is fitting. And based on the designs you've shown us and your commitment to appropriately recognize our Californian ancestors, we are pleased to offer our support of the Riverfront Park Amphitheater." We met three separate times with the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which has submitted their unanimous endorsement of the design before you this evening, and we look forward to your vote in favor of moving forward with this design. Now, Ken did a good job answering questions, but I may be able to improve the acoustics question if asked.
Oh, everyone raise their hand.
How about the acoustics? With regard to acoustics, indeed, we are in a concept-design phase, so we don't have all the hard answers as far as what it will be built out of and things of that nature. Your vote tonight allows us to answer that question, but indeed, we will be consulting with an accusation. We will be consulting with the performance community and having ongoing dialogue with regard to that. One of the things that was important with regard to acoustics that is a compromise in this is that the community is clear that they want to be able to see through this and have the view to the area beyond. So we don't want to build a concrete shell that blocks everything and projects sound forward, but we'll do our best.
Commissioner Cook.
As far as flexibility with design, sorry, I keep forgetting my mic's on. As far as flexibility with design, I really appreciated the statements that you said about meeting the changing needs as they continue. And I know that this is projected as a permanent structure, all of it being permanent. What thought have you given to having flexibility with design elements as weather needs change, as the community grows and changes? Can you tell me about some of your thoughts there, please?
That's an excellent question, and a good example in answering that is a conversation I had with the President of the Salem Theater Network just a week or two ago. The theater community is excited about perhaps doing smaller performances with the audience located on the stage and the performance taking place in the balcony or under the balcony. And the idea of essentially shifting perspective so that the audience is seated on the stage does provide for that cover for the audience, but even then, we want to have the rigging points or the points within the structure that a scrim or a windscreen could be added and dropped so that performances, whether it's all contained within the stage or a more traditional setting, it has the flexibility to address various hanging elements that would enhance a performance.
Nothing flexible as far as the structure itself, just with the rigging? Nothing about making part of the structure change or during the winter, being able to change the coverage or anything like that?
No.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Linda Walmart.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and councilors. My name is Linda Walmart and I live at 4734 Bradford Loop Southeast in Counselor Nanki's Ward. And I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of 350 Salem, Oregon. 350.org, we are the sister affiliate for, or the local affiliate of 350.org, which is an international group dedicated toward addressing climate change issues. So I am here tonight to express our full support for adoption of the Environmental Action Goal as stated in the proposed strategic plan. And also, we want to very much thank you for including stakeholder groups such as 350 Salem, Oregon, in the process of consideration of developing this Environmental Action Goal. This broader representation of community groups is vital to ensuring fair, equitable, and effective solutions that are widely supported by the community. Our combined efforts will help to maintain a healthy environment as well as improve the city's vitality, livability, and economy. We need to be mindful of the need for consensus building and communication with the public at every step of the way. A climate action plan must address the welfare of all residents in Salem. We urge you, as we move forward, to continue expanding this community involvement, including, but not limited to, representatives from low-income communities, communities of color, the healthcare community, youth, the business community, SEDCOR, and built environmental professionals such as architects and urban planners. 350 Salem, Oregon is committed to supporting your efforts to create, fund, and implement a climate action plan. We welcome a collaborative approach with the city toward building a stable, healthy environment and climate for us all. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Linda. Michael Slater.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, councilors, and city staff. My name's Michael Slater. I've lived in Ward Seven for 11 years now. I'm here tonight in support of the strategic plan. As I've testified before, when the strategic plan was first announced, a number of my colleagues and I got together, and we've been following this effort very closely over the past year. We're excited today to see that it's up on the agenda, and we encourage you to adopt it. We believe this is a very good document, especially in light of the fact that it is the council's first strategic plan that involves such lengthy public participation. It identifies a set of seven goals that are well-aligned to the challenges the city face, and for each one identifies areas where more research is needed, where more public input is needed, and where the city is ready to act now. There are a number of elements in here that we're particularly pleased to see, including a Housing First policy, which I know the city has already adopted, a rental assistance program for chronically homeless, which the city has also adopted, as well as a commitment to work on developing a sobering center, a climate action plan, and we even saw a discussion of more branch libraries. So a number of very, very good features and overall a very good direction, we think, for the city. I have a few concerns that I wanted to share tonight because I think they're not too late to address. First, I think we did miss the mark a little bit by not having a participation strategy that fully included communities of color in our city, particularly the Latino community and the Marshallese and Islander community. There are several projects in the strategic plan that call for extended citizen involvement, such as the direction of future growth, so there is still time, I think, to make sure that we correct that problem. Second, I worry that there are several important areas of city government that are not addressed by the strategic plan, and as a result, could lose out if the budget is driven by the strategic plan as we've been discussing. I'm thinking specifically of parks here, which I think you can all agree are a bit underfunded. My biggest concern, however, is the ability to plan, execute, and report back to the community on the large number of goals and actions the plan contemplates without adding more senior staff. I go back to the very first assessment by Econ Northwest, which found the city did not have sufficient staff to carry out long-term planning, forecasting, and reporting. As we begin the budget cycle, I think it's important to look at that recommendation and see if it's not too late to correct it. Finally, I would just like to say that as, this was really the first time that I and a number of my colleagues have been involved in city government to this extended degree, and we are especially grateful for, I think, the way in which the staff and councilors have invited us into this process, have been responsive to our questions, have allowed us to participate. It's really been an education in local government, and we're all very grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have signed up. Anyone else want to speak to the council? Yah, Ross.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Ross Schwarzenbruder, President of Salem Creative Network, which is located at 365 Ferry Street Southeast Downtown, and I am speaking tonight in favor of Resolution 3.2A, a grant approval to the Salem Main Street Association to further economic promotion activity within the downtown parking district. So the Salem Creative Network was organized in 2009 to provide creative solutions through social innovation. Removing barriers to market growth downtown became one area of our educational efforts. After a few years of market testing, two areas of development were identified: creation of entertainment-friendly policies and targeted public funding. In 2012, we invited Jim Peters of the Responsible Hospitality Institute to speak about the process of creating an entertainment district in Salem. His organization created dozens of entertainment districts in North America, including Austin, Seattle, and Nashville. Salem was identified as a nascent nighttime economy, needing improvement in political will and noise policy to grow. With the move of providing parking tax funding promotional grants to local organizations, it appears that the political will now favors growing the nighttime economy. The Downtown Parking Tax Fund was established primarily to provide funding for downtown promotions. Since the dissolution of the Economic Improvement District, promotional grants to organizations from the Parking Tax Fund have dwindled from $100,000 to nothing. Approving a grant for the Salem Main Street Association would begin to restore targeted funding for downtown promotions. And since the Parking Tax Fund has grown to over $1 million now, Salem Creative Network recommends increasing the grant amount to $100,000 for fiscal year 2017-18. In addition, Salem Creative Network asks all interested parties to help the city of Salem create an entertainment district that allows noise levels of daytime 70 decibels until midnight without extra permitting. A Salem Entertainment District would leverage accommodations, food service, arts, entertainment, and recreation, as cultural amenities that attract a higher density downtown, help new and small businesses grow, and create a city where people stay and grow. Please approve Resolution 3.2A, allow other organizations to apply for parking tax grants, and start an open process to create a Salem Entertainment District. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay. Counselor McCoyd, the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent calendar with the following polls. 3.2A by Counselor Kaiser. 3.3A by Counselor ASIC.
OSEC.
OSEC, sorry.
Just checking, I didn't know.
That's what I get.
Sometimes you get a new one here you don't.
And 3.3G by Counselor Hoy.
Okay.
Second.
Second. By Nanki, go ahead then, Counselor, and explain what you're.
Okay, so on the consent calendar tonight, we've got the minutes from the October 9th council meeting and the October 16th council work session. Under 3.3B, we have the reappointment of Linda Olson as the Municipal Judge Pro temp. Judge Olson has been in this position since 1982, and this will be another two-year term. Item 3.3C is an intergovernmental, authorizes the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation, and certain amendments to the intergovernmental agreement to provide up to $20,000 in reimbursement funds to the city through the mortar carrier safety action plan during the fiscal year 2017-18. This money will be used for, basically, commercial truck inspections within the city limits at a charge of $113.75 an hour, up to the $20,000 minimum. It's interesting in this, the city staff indicates that when one of these trucks is pulled over within the city limits, they find three to five violations, and it often ends up with the truck being basically stopped till they're fixed and not prevented or allowed to continue. So this is important stuff. 3.3D is to purchase, authorizes the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement with KNE Excavating for the sale of Franzen Reservoir, Surplus Real Property, $875,000. 3.3E directs staff to prepare an amendment to the Salem Revised Code to allow for qualifying nonprofit corporations, low-income housing projects, to seek a property tax exemption. 3.3F is an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon to abandon existing tunnels that ran between the north and south campuses of the state hospitals out on Center Street and retain, and fill them with certified fill that the city agrees with, and allow on the western tunnel, the state to retain and maintain communication infrastructure under Center Street. And 3.38 is once again authorize the city manager to execute the cable television franchise extension agreement with Comcast of Oregon to allow staff to continue the negotiations. This has been an ongoing thing. This goes through April 30th of next year. And finally, 3.3E ratified the deputy city manager's execution of- And finally, 3.3E, ratify the deputy city manager's execution of the attached intergovernmental agreement with the state Oregon Military Department Office of Emergency Management regarding the activation of the Emergency Management Assistance Compact. Basically, we sent, in response to a request from California, a fire truck, a unit, and staff to Northern California to assist in fighting the wildfires that they dealt with here earlier in the month. Deputy city manager sent that out. Because it was an emergency, we have to ratify what he did. I'm not sure what happens if we don't, because it's done.
And that's 3.3I.
3.3I, yes.
Right.
And that is the consent count.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have no public hearings. We'll go to special orders of business. Counselor McCoy.
Oh, I've got one here. This is a first for me. I had a... Wait a minute, I gotta dig out the exact...
This is a...
The lack of exact wording, because this is, you know... "I move to direct staff to prepare a report and recommendation regarding whether ducks should be allowed to be kept in residential zones in the city, similar to the manner in which chickens are allowed."
Second. Osik, was that you?
Is to the motion. We had somebody from Ward 4, Donald Van Dyke, came here a couple of meetings ago and told us the story how he'd had ducks, I guess as pets, for lack of a better word, for most of his adult life. He'd just moved to Salem and brought them with him, assumed it was okay. There's been a complaint, and it was this was in September, from somebody, one of his neighbors, and he was asking if anything could be done. And discussing it with him, and really discussing with a couple of the other councilors, we sort of was going, well, is this any different than chickens? This motion will find out if it's different than chickens or not, and depending on what doesn't come out of that report, we can either allow ducks in backyards or tell Mr. Van Dyke why we don't allow them. So, that's what we're doing here.
Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Kaser.
Are we sure we don't want to study on beavers as well?
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Go forward, staff. Counselor Kaser, 3.2A.
Thank you. I move staff recommendation.
Second by Hoy. Discussion.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, and I actually prompted Ms. Rutherford already about this, but can you just kind of briefly explain how this would work? So, we're talking about taking funds from the parking fund and basically allowing the city manager to apply those or give those to the Salem Main Street Association as they apply for them, up to a certain amount that's approved by council or the Budget Committee each year. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. So, this started during the last budget session with a request through the Salem Main Street Association to have funding available from the parking fund for, to help them get started as an organization and help them with some of their initial promotional activities. So, we placed this $32,000 and change into the budget proposal, which was adopted to help stand up the Main Street activities. These sorts of activities are not eligible for grants through urban renewal. That can only be invested in bricks and mortar types of improvements. It cannot be used for marketing and promotion. However, the parking fund can. So, that's why it's allocated from the parking fund budget rather than another budget. And then, the reason that it's before you tonight is because we do not have a grant process established and in place to make these kinds of grants. These would need to come before the council every time a grant request came to us. So, you could be seeing multiple grants of $5,000, $8,000. So, rather than having that process where each of these would come before the council for award and to also facilitate the timeliness of being able to respond to Main Street when they have a promotional activity that they want to undertake, we wanted to develop a program where these grant awards could just go to the city manager for review and award.
And these funds will be distributed as requested and only up to that amount approved each year.
That's correct. It would have to be re-awarded in next year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. What other types of things do we use the parking fund to pay for?
The parking fund is used for things like paying for the clean team that circulates through the downtown. We pay for our hanging baskets from the parking fund. We pay for Christmas lights through the parking fund, but most importantly, we pay for all of the maintenance and structural improvements to our parking garages through that parking tax.
Thank you, Director for Rutherford. Sorry, it's weird. I'm just gonna move it like this. I had a question about having it go through the city manager. Is that just to help with staff absorption, being able to look at the grants? Do you have the capacity right now in your department to review? How many grants do you anticipate coming?
So, we do have the capacity to do it internally at a staff level. For example, when it comes to urban renewal grants, as the director, I have authority up to $300,000 to award those grants at my discretion if they, if an application meets criteria. Because this is sort of a new pilot project, you know, we anticipate that we will see somewhere between three to five grant applications that will absorb this $32,000. We have suggested routing it through the city manager's office because it is the first time we're doing something like this.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wake.
This is more of just a general procedures question. We have some letters that came in concerning these issues, and we had some speakers talk about these things, and they raise some questions and concerns. And how does the city handle those that you can see a response from the city to things that are raised?
We vote.
But, but before, like, you know, I see Carol Smith...
I'm not sure I understand. We each received a copy of the letters and have read them. We ask our questions based on our questions to proceed forward with our business, and that's what we're doing.
Well, what I...
You want to ask questions from those, or...
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering whether staff in any way provides an answer to the person that sends an email or sends a letter or gives public... How do people know what was done with their, and how the city responds to their, the issues that they raise? And if we don't, we have any response...
They're part of the consideration. They're part of the information we receive in our decision-making, and the resulting decision tends to reflect the assimilation of a lot of different kind of information. Okay? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Osik.
Move staff recommendation.
Thank you. Second.
By Hoy.
By Hoy, I'm sorry. I missed that. She had your mic, didn't she? Counselor Osik.
So, I just wanted to start just asking a little bit about how the maintenance is going to be paid for. I think we talked a little bit in advance to prepare. Is there a plan or is a projection of cost so far for the maintenance and how that will be paid for?
Yeah, so Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. That's way too early to know that. Typically, when things are donated to the city, such as the playground equipment or the pavilion, the city then assumes the costs of maintaining and ultimately replacing the carousel. You know, we maintain, you know, that building as well. In discussions, very early discussions that we're having with Rotary, we think one of the things that we'll want to do at some point is establish some kind of agreement that we would bring back to the council to have those kinds of discussions, those kinds of issues addressed as to, you know, the city will assume the maintenance responsibility. Ultimately, we will. We'll be the owners. Will they plan on endowing a certain part of it? We've seen that before, Union Pacific Railroad Bridge, when that was donated to us. You know, that came with an endowment, so sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But at this point, we don't know.
Counselor Cook.
I wanted to thank Counselor Osik for pulling this as well, because maintenance costs were on my mind, especially with our tour of Public Works this last week, just thinking about the cost behind the cost behind the cost. I also had a question, Director Fernandez, about determining if additional staff or volunteer time will be needed to support or supervise community use. It sounds like you're already thinking about with an agreement, looking at prioritization with scheduling. I know when Willamette University's Rachel Kingman Stack testified, she talked about involving other community members, whether it be music, dance, or theater, just looking at staff in recreation and their responsibilities for scheduling, if there's going to be a prioritized scheduling among schools or nonprofits, how that would work. And I just want to make sure that anything put in place in that contract is flexible enough to be able to accommodate those uses, not just with the maintenance costs, but also with the potential staff time.
Right, so as the owners, as the city being the owner, we wouldn't anticipate, I mean, we would be the sole decision-makers as to how to prioritize and how to schedule. Riverfront Park is a highly, highly-used events area. That's how it was designed. So, as more and more events come into play, both concerts and fairs and races and all kinds of things, it is becoming a more significant issue, and we are, again, in the early discussions of, is it just a window opens and it's first come, first served, or are people given priority, groups given priority? And we just don't know yet. For now, it has worked pretty well. Certain events come through every single year and schedule, and we know that they're coming. With this facility, if there's, if it's as successful as we hope it will be, then we might need to think a little more about how we do that and how events don't... Sometimes we can have two different events going on at the same time at the park, but we want to make sure that they don't conflict with each other.
Thank you, Director Fernandez. That leads me to my next question. As far as the use of parks and the design of parks, quite a few people in my ward have talked about when there are events happening at the park, whether it's the bite or the brew, how they don't have access unless they're able to pay going in, and how they feel as taxpayers putting money into the park and not having access to that facility. And just before I go any further, I love Rotary. My fourth-grade teacher was a Rotarian. I'm not, I'm just trying to ask some critical questions, because as these parks belong to everybody, I think people are concerned, what is the purpose of a park? Is it to enjoy green space? Is it to have quiet? Of course, once an amphitheater is built, the temptation is, well, let's make sure there's something going on every weekend, and are we losing something in the meantime? So, just being cognizant of that as far as the scheduling goes and the concerns, and making sure the access is still there on our end from the city.
So, there is always, access is always maintained to the park, so events are allowed to reserve the meadows, but the walkways that are along the edges are always open to the public, so people can traverse across the park. But the park was designed for events in mind. That was the original concept and continues to this day to be an event park. So, areas are allowed to be fenced off and in some cases to charge money, such as the concerts and the different kinds of events. But the park is never closed to the public, and event organizers understand that, that the walkways must remain open and people are allowed to go through the park.
And how this affects with the ice skating rink going through? I had someone mention, well, you know, if we have an ice skating rink plus the pavilion plus the amphitheater, where's my green space? So, as far as the park's design team and with maintenance issues on that, the ice skating rink is going to be the purview of the company that runs it, so no maintenance there.
That's just a temporary, that's a big tent. So, that's no different than a stage or an event. They'll be there for two months, two and a half months for folks to enjoy, and then that'll be taken down, I think, first of February or something.
No idea for the summer? No summer ice skating, no like beach summer?
No, 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 no summer ice skating, only in Dubai.
Okay. Just making sure.
Do remember, we do have an amphitheater there now. It's being, that's being used quite a bit. Yes, Counselor McCoy.
Peter, so we're approving the design, I get that, but at some point in the future, before building starts, we're going to see a contract or a proposal or something written saying, here's what we're going to do, here's how we're going to maintain it, those kinds of things for us to look at and approve before...
Yeah, this is a pretty substantial donation that Rotary is providing to the city, so I think it behooves us to have a clear understanding of what Rotary's expectations are, what the city's expectations are, so we are, we're beginning to do that. I also should say that, think back in, back in, we find the correct one, on March 27th, we had a staff report come to council where we talked about preserving an area in advance for the pavilion in advance of the Riverfront Park master planning process. We are just kicking off the Riverfront Park master planning process, which will include the pavilion, will include a conversation with the community about, should that amphitheater area be increased, you know, so the fan become bigger, what we're doing with the four acres and what we're doing with the rest of the park. So, that master plan, really, we're working off of the original plans, and the park is substantially different from the original vision of the park, so, and in its use. So, we're just getting underway, and we will work with a lot of stakeholders and the community in general to address these kinds of issues.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Wake.
Yes, Peter, you say the master plan is just starting for the riverfront, and my understanding was that's like a three-to-five-year process. And I had asked one time, what happens to that four-acre slab of concrete between now and when they decide what to do with it? And we now hear that the amphitheater might be up by, you know, within a couple of years before the master plan is done. And so, I know the mayor was down at the riverfront during the Micronesian Festival, and I was down there at that time, and what I saw was four acres of concrete with a gate so people can't go there, and people going round and around the parking lot looking for parking. And I guess the question is, when are you going to open up that for parking?
So, the master planning process is not going to take five years. We expect that it will take under a year to be able to be done and bring that back to council. What will take time, then, is its implementation. My goal with the four acres is to have that opened up as quickly as possible for people to enjoy. There are issues. It has to be capped, as the rest of the park was capped, we're not allowed to dig it up. So, some of the considerations are, do we dig out some of the dirt and lay out a cap so that it's at the same level, or do we basically put it two feet higher and create elevation? So, that's a discussion that's ongoing. The other discussion that's ongoing is, we recognize that there's a need for more parking on the south side. The question is, is how much parking? We certainly don't want to use up all four acres for parking, so with the issues of the soil and the cap, some of that would have to be removed. So, it becomes more expensive than we had originally hoped, so we are working on that, and that might be an early-action item that we discuss with the community so that we can get that area opened up just as quickly as possible, so people can go, at a minimum with just the lawn and some soft trails, so people can enjoy it.
But maybe before the next summer season of festivals, some of that parking could be available.
Maybe.
Hold that thought. Oh, that's a great idea. Okay, all, I think we're done? Yes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Move forward. Move forward, Rotarians.
With your conceptual...
3.3G, Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the Salem strategic plan.
Second. Second by McCoy. Councilor Hoy.
Well, I couldn't let this momentous occasion just pass by on the consent calendar. I felt like we needed to talk about it a little bit. And I just wanted to say that I'm very excited about having this plan in place and all of the various elements. I think a lot of the members of the public spoke to it today, so I won't reiterate. But I'm very excited about the planning process that we went through and how it's going to drive our budget process. And I just wanted to be able to talk about that a little bit before we just pass it.
Councilor McCoy.
Yeah, I'd like to compliment Courtney Knox-Bush for this report. There's a lot, I thought she really did a great job of encapsulating what was a pretty thorough process on, you know, almost a year in the making. And I, too, am excited about this with an advocate early on. I think this is going to be a great tool, if it's used correctly, for this city council and future councils to use as they decide what to fund and how to fund it and how the city grows and where we need to pay attention to different things. So, you can't, and what I think is very important was, and it's something I've advocated in my business career, it goes from having us trying to figure out, guess what the citizens want and what their view of vision of the, for the city is, to, we went and asked them, heard it, and incorporated it in a plan for the future that they're going to buy into because it was a lot of their ideas that are in this document. So, I think this is a great deal, and thanks to Courtney and the staff for all the work they've done to get this to the place it's at.
Yeah, I agree. And one of the things I thought about it as well, that I hope we will not let this get on a shelf, I really do. And I think one way you avoid shelving this kind of document is beginning to look at due dates and looking at dates of accomplishment, whether you've completed it or are planning to, and kind of what does that timeline start to look like. So, I hope we keep this alive by discussing, if not all of it, elements of it, looking for sort of outcomes and kind of what our expectations are for some of these outcomes to occur. I don't think we can accomplish all this, you know, in a few months, but I do think there are elements of it that we've already done, and other elements we can do reasonably, in a reasonably timely manner, or at least begin the process of getting them done. So, I hope we can look at that. Councilor Kizer.
Thanks. I agree with all the comments here. It was really interesting undergoing the strategic planning process, and kudos to staff and especially showing up at all the evening and Saturday meetings. I'm sure you're all happy to be done with it as well because it was a huge investment of time. And also, thank you to members of the public, looking at Michael Slater and Linda Walmark and all the Salem 350 and everyone else who kind of came out. I was really impressed with the number of people who showed up here on Saturday mornings at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning to participate in this. And I'm, the city has never had a strategic plan. I think that's a really big deal. And there's been departments that have had one, but as far as the city as a whole in a unified way has not had one before. So, I think that's a big milestone. And I'm looking forward to seeing this implemented during our budgeting process.
Councilor Osick.
Thank you. And I just want to agree with the other councilors who thanked the staff and say, to what the mayor was saying, this, creating the policy agenda starting in January and whatever, I hope the public keeps coming out and getting involved to set down the concrete actions that we're going to take in the next year and follow up on them so make sure we're being held to actually accomplish those things because we do want to keep this engagement going. That's how it's going to be successful, I think. So, thank you all for everything you've done.
That's great.
Looking at staff.
Councilor Cook.
Just a second. Dang it. Just a second. What the councilors have said with the strategic planning process, it was wonderful to go through the experience with the consultants and with staff and with members of our neighborhood. And I think the mayor's right that we've got these little due dates and little asks that we can look at to gauge our accomplishment. These are big goals, big frameworks, but ultimately, it's really nice to have that data-driven plan where we can have those marks to meet. So, thank you.
Mr. Wake.
Yes, as a member of the public participating in these, I thought it was very well done. And I appreciate that now it does seem like city council and the public are helping to direct staff, what are the priorities? And then, you'll have deadlines, as you said. And so, that'll be, that's a real positive thing. The only thing that I would like to encourage is that, right now, the housing focuses on apartments, you know, multifamily and then into single-family. But I think before you get to multifamily, you might have lower cost, which might be RV parks, or it might even be campgrounds. And there's no discussion of that below the apartment level, what housing are we providing? And, but there is, there are people out there either camping or parking on the streets in RVs, or even the guidance on what to do about an RV in somebody's driveway, you know? And so, to add that to the discussion, I think, would be helpful.
Anyone else? Councilor Hoy.
Just as a final comment, I just want to say how happy and proud I am that we have a climate action agenda in our strategic plan. I think that's, it's high time that we did that, and I'm very pleased that all the, my fellow councilors agreed with that. So, thank you.
Okay.
If that may, Mayor. I'd be remiss if I didn't also thank each of you for your hours and hours of volunteerism to participate on Saturday mornings, on various evenings, and be a part of this process. And offer my reassurance, as would the city manager if he were here, that this will become a living document, that it will drive what we do and who we are. And we're very proud to have a mission, vision, and values established, as well as some key objectives that we can work toward. And as you come together in January, that will set the policy in direction for us as staff to move that vision forward. So, thank you very much for your efforts.
Great. Councilor May.
Thanks. And just a quick add-on to that, because a lot of times you'll see strategic plans laid out. And similar to council goals in the past, we'd get a report on a periodic basis, it would say, and this is what staff has done since the last report, which kind of has council outside of that except for the initial setting to balance one versus another as opportunities come up, and it needs to stay alive, and we need to be actively involved with it on a continuous basis. So, thank you. Looking forward to working forward with the plan.
Very good. Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Okay, information reports.
They were informative.
They were. Did anyone have any questions on the economic development or SEDCOR report? That was one of the meatier ones. Ms. Rutherford's here to answer those in detail, if you want. Yes, Councilor Kizer.
Well, I actually have questions, just because it came up at 6.8. And I wrote down a couple of questions, so I don't know how that works.
Talk to the lawyer.
All right. My question is, is this parcel that's under consideration, is this right-of-way already surveyed, then, in it?
Essentially, the, and correct me where I'm wrong, Lisa, where I'm wrong. I believe the right-of-way is in our transportation system plan, and once they actually come in with a development proposal as opposed to a comp plan and zone change, so if they come in for, I believe it's being rezoned to multifamily, so, such as a site plan design review for a multifamily complex, at that point, through that land use decision, we would get them to dedicate and convey the right-of-way. So, this is just a zone change. It wouldn't be appropriate, really, to stick a diagram or something on a zone change map because it doesn't really have any effect.
Okay. And my second question was, is why, if it's, I get the development and dedicating the right-of-way and all that, so my question, I guess, was, if it's already right-of-way, why isn't it already indicated on a zoning map? Is it just...
Because it's, all it is is a survey in our comp plan. It's not, it's not a, we can't, we can't exact it from someone until they've actually tried to develop the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Lewis.
Yeah, 6.8, I was just, just a note. And I found the information I think I was looking for on page two, but, you know, it would be nice, my time on the Downtown Advisory Board, we talked a lot about return of value. That's the purpose of the urban renewal areas, is to increase the value, increase the taxes, fix the blighted areas, and then dissolve the URAs. It would be nice, I think, on the quarterly report to show, you know, maybe in a graph or something, the value that's been added per quarter, so we can track those additional potential tax dollars.
We have an annual report that we started last December that will be coming out with our second annual report this December that does share that information. But if it's helpful, we can begin adding that to our quarterly reports as well. It's a little bit more challenging to do on a quarterly basis to get that information from the tax assessor's office, which is why we've been doing it annually.
Perhaps you could, at some future date, Ms. Rutherford, maybe suggest to us if there is a sort of an interim time period that the assessor might have information other than one year? I mean, do they have it at six or nine or, yeah, okay. Any others? All righty. Move on, then, to first readings.
Report number 2317 relating to a change to the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan map designation for 1332 and 1334 Wallace Road Northwest.
Kizer makes the motion. Kizer's moved. Councilor Kizer.
Move staff recommendation?
Second.
Second by Osick. Go ahead. Would you like to speak to it?
Well, I think I got my, I mean, when I initially looked at the staff report, I thought, well, the first thing I always look for in these land use reports is neighborhood comment. I didn't actually see any neighborhood comment in this, and I'm not sure, that's unusual, I would say, for West Salem Neighborhood Association to not provide that. So, I was a little surprised by that. I know, they're busy. So, I was, that's when the kind of peoples came out tonight to testify, and I was a little confused, but I think I have kind of my facts straight and where this should actually lie in the process. So, I feel, I feel fine supporting this.
Okay. Further discussion? Councilor Lewis?
Just a comment. We did hear testimony this evening from the former chair of the West Salem Neighborhood Association that it did approve the recommendation.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Do you have anyone else?
No one signed up.
Okay, have no one else signed up? Is there anyone that wanted to address council on an issue not on the agenda? Okay, then, we are adjourned.